All right, Ms. Gwen, you ready? Ms. Gwen is ready. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Please don't forget to enter the meeting on your microphone. The regular meeting of Iberia Parish School Board to be held at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, in the Iberia Parish School Board Room at the Administrative Building located at 1500 Jane Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. Call to order. Let the Iberia Parish School Board Meeting be called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call. Ms. Gwen.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
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 We're gonna have a moment of silence for Mr. Jim Trotter. He's the teacher and principal at St. Charles. Mr. Anthony Williams, Sr., is a bus driver. Mr. Ned Paul Dugah, father of Michelle Burke, Assistant Purchasing Agent for Iberia Parish School Board Room. Ms. Inola Duchette Vitale, mother of Patrick Vitale, PE teacher at Laurville Elementary. And Ms. Rita Rogers, retired teacher at Canal Elementary. Followed by the moment of silence would be the prayer by Ms. McNeil and the pledge by Mr. McDonald. Please stand for a moment of silence. Amen. Ms. McNeil.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the students, staff, faculty, alumni, and friends of the Iberia Parish system. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Mr. McDonald.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil and Mr. McDonald. Public comment instructions on agenda items. The requirement regarding public comment for a school board meeting is that a call for public comment must take place prior to each agenda item and vote by the board. If you wish to comment on an agenda item during this meeting, please proceed as follows. Please fill out a card with your first and last name and the agenda item you wish to address. These requests to address the board regarding an agenda item will be heard prior to each agenda item as is taken up. Any cards to be turned in? Hearing none. Moving on to presentations. Receive a presentation from Acadiana Center for the Arts. Ms. Bree Sargent. You can come here. Or you could pass it out if you need.
How are y'all tonight? Great. My name is Bree Sargent. I'm the Education Director at the Acadiana Center for the Arts. We are housed in Lafayette, but serve the whole region. Um, where am I pointing this? Maybe not.
Can I give the presentation?
Thank you. Great. So, we are the Acadiana Center for the Arts. We are the Regional Arts Council for all of Acadiana. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary this year and with a goal of fostering art and culture in Acadiana. For nearly all of those 50 years, we've worked heavily in the area of arts and education to provide access to all students in public schools to the arts in education. So that is what we've been doing and we have been working to spread those programs throughout all of Acadiana. We've been working in partnership with Lafayette Parish Public School System for 48 years and have begun working throughout with public school districts throughout Acadiana. So, our newest parish, Iberia Parish, we are so excited to say. It's especially exciting for me because I am from New Iberia, class of '95, niche. I did all of my public school here. And so it was really special for us to be able to come out and do this work here. In working with Superintendent Huland to identify the needs of the district and where we could really use funding to meet the, reach the most students, we identified two programs. The first is in-school performance. Really taking the barrier of field trips and buses out, we're actually bringing live performance into schools. So students are able to experience live performance in music, dance, theater. We create a season and what you're receiving right now are our season catalogs from some of our other parishes. We're working on yours right now. It's with our designer, actually. So schools receive these catalogs and they have a season of performances that they're able to choose from. Much like the ACA's season of performances on our main stage, our schools also have their own season to choose from. Each school will receive between one and four performances. This is a unique situation. Superintendent Huland challenged us and said, "We want every single student to be able to see a performance." That's not something any of our districts have asked of us before. So because we keep audience sizes small so that all students have a really good experience, we are actually doing more performances in Iberia Parish schools to be able to give those access. So shows are built and designed specifically for schools. They are really entertaining, but they also have an educational component to them. The other program that we'll bring is called the Teaching Artist Program, and this is where local artists, working artists, go into classrooms and work with students in all art forms. So we're actually working in your community, training artists in this community to work in schools. So that is what a teaching artist is. They are practicing professional artists who have an affinity for and are very interested in working with students. Our staff at ACA train them to understand how to work with students at different developmental levels and how to build those sessions. So there's a roster of sessions that schools will be able to choose from to have artists come and visit their classrooms. Each school will receive between nine and 18 sessions. All of this is free to the schools. They're paid for through funding from the district and others. So all of these sessions are designed and led by local teaching artists. Many of them are actually integrated into curriculum, into science and social studies and math curriculum. So they're not only having an experience and learning something new about art, they're actually learning their academic curriculum as well. This particular session is right out of the science curriculum about paper wasps. He's so proud of it. But we're so excited to say that we've actually gotten funding, a three-year commitment from the Iberia Foundation, the Community Foundation, to do this work with us. So besides the funds that the district has put forth, we're able to do a bit more because of funding from the Iberia Parish, the Iberia Foundation. They have committed for three years, $15,000 to add to what you guys are doing to really be able to broaden that and give more. That's why some schools are getting 18 sessions. We've identified the highest poverty schools to be able to receive more access to the arts in that way. But because the ACA is now a partner with you as a school district, all the other things that we offer kind of come with that outside of the contract. We offer professional development opportunities in the arts for educators. That's something your teachers will have access to. We offer, we are the regional agency for Poetry Out Loud, which is a national poetry recitation competition. During COVID, we created 532 online art classes that teachers will have access to as well. So these are all things just as a partner that ACA also kind of brings to the table. We will have a kickoff event that you're all invited to and we'll make sure you get an invitation on Wednesday, September 10th, here somewhere in Iberia Parish. We haven't identified the location for that. We'll have a kickoff event for this during National Arts and Education Week where we will invite each of, an identified arts liaison at each of the schools to come and learn more about how this will work for them. They'll get their new catalogs, like you have the ones from last year. They'll see snippets of performances that they'll be able to bring in. They'll be able to meet some of the teaching artists. And it's just an evening that we're gonna be able to sort of share information about this partnership and what it is that we're doing. We have a team, three full-time staff members who are dedicated to this program at the Acadiana Center for the Arts. That is us. And this is my contact info because I encourage always questions, ideas. We really, as partners, we really wanna make sure that this is working well for this community. While we have a track record with a lot of these programs, what we know is that every community is different, every school is different, and we wanna make sure that we're meeting the particular goals of your district, of individual schools, and of classroom teachers. So we have a very open door policy. Wanna make sure that that conversation's going both ways. So we always encourage you to reach out if you have questions, ideas, if you know any artists who might be interested in joining our teaching artist roster. And we very much look forward to working with your district this year and for years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Any questions for Ms. Sargent? Mr. Huland.
I'd just like to add that the funding that the district will contribute will be made possible through Title I and Title IV federal funds. And Mr. Ferguson has been working closely with Ms. Sargent to arrange for that. And so we're happy to say that this will be part of that program as well. And once we get the schedule for performances, then the schools will definitely share with the board members and you're all welcome to come to any of the schools to see a performance or to observe one of the teaching artists when they're in the classroom. Thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Thank you for coming to Iberia Parish. Moving on to the consent agenda item. Any board member wish to remove consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none. C1, approved minutes of the regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Board, July 16, 2025. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Dana Dugah, second by Mr. Danny Segura. Questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen. That motion passes. Moving on to agenda items. D1, consider recommendation regarding payments, partial or substantial completion of stronger connection projects, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Back here, doing the same thing with a different funding source. So much like ESSER, we have a September 30th deadline on stronger connections. So we are declaring these projects substantially complete in order to start the lean-free time period of 45 days. At our next meeting, which would be the first meeting, no, second meeting in September, we will be asking to declare them final and the same process as we did, same motions as we did for ESSER. So it was basically a little early to punch these out, but we did anyway because of the timeline that was set forth by the grant. They have been diligently working on both of these projects since we punched them out. Especially the fence, they realized when I said I have micrometers and calipers to inspect fences that I meant what I was saying. I tried to give people a heads up, but they didn't listen. So you see extensive punch lists on the fence project and you see a punch list that has been really narrowed on the entry. We have three or four of those that aren't complete yet and in various progresses. On the entry, our signage is also in order, has been ordered for over a week. That is not part of the project. It's something through the maintenance department. But we are moving positively on both of these projects. Therefore, we recommend substantial completion on the Stronger Connection video entry devices parish-wide and the Stronger Connection security fencing at Delcum High School and Laurville High School. One point of note is the electric gate system has been taught to the people at Laurville, to the administration, as well as to our staff today. So I would hope to see that to begin in use tomorrow. All the mechanical punch code gates are installed at that site also.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Dana Dugah, second by Ms. Mercy McNeil. Questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D2, consider recommendation to grant CLECO a right-of-way at IPCC, new building, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Similar to Sugar Land, we had a power line that was gonna be over our construction site, which cannot take place. The only difference is that Sugar Land, we had granted CLECO a right-of-way and revoked that right-of-way and asked for a new right-of-way. At IPCC, they did not have a right-of-way, which leads me to believe it was part of the original Navy Base construction because it was a feeder to Building 20, which was the recreation building at site. So therefore, we're simply asking to grant a new right-of-way for the line to be rerouted, not to over our building, but to be in a safe location with the appropriate distance from that location.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Pratier, second by Ms. Savoie. Questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Moving on to D3, consider recommendation to approve revisions to the Iberia Parish School Board transportation guide and take appropriate actions.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board. I seek your favorable approval for our transportation cost guide. As the letter states, after thorough review of all of our cost sheets, whether that's for field trips, whether that's for our speed, midday runs, our split routes for, if we have to split routes throughout the day, partial or full ACE and IPCC, there really wasn't, from what I could gather, any mathematical reasoning behind the prices. And so what we were able to do was come up with a pricing where if we decide in the future to increase, that we can easily increase going forward. Some of those feesheets, it wasn't, it wasn't said or hadn't been addressed since back in 2017. And so I just wanted to bring in everything current and make it mathematically make sense.
Thank you, Dr. White. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Pratier, second by Mr. Danny Segura. Questions for Dr. White? Mr. Dugah.
I just wanna thank you for your hard work on this matter and the savings you're passing on to the system is really appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. White? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item D4, consider adoption of the 2025-2026 District Salary Schedule booklet and take appropriate action. Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you, we have the Salary Schedule booklet that we would adopt for the 25-26 school year. This is a procedure that is, the legislative auditors have asked us to do each year. And so this Salary Schedule booklet will encompass the revisions that we have to all the, based on the LeanFrog study and the structures. So all of that is in this Salary Schedule booklet and we are in the process of making those changes to payroll so that we can pay according to this Salary Schedule booklet on the August payroll. And, did I leave anything out?
Nope.
We're gonna post it tonight, if it's approved, so that the employees will be able to see all the schedules themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Pratier, second by Mr. McDonald. Questions for Mr. Dooley or Ms. Tenen? Hearing none.
I had a question, but it was answered by Ms. Tenen.
Okay, but it was answered by Ms. Tenen. Any other questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes. Board members, for the next agenda item, I'm gonna pass the gavel to Mr. LeBlanc so I could participate in discussion.
Agenda item D5 is to consider the adoption of the Iberia Parish School Board Resolution Number 08-2025, a resolution of support for Iberia Parish ordinance 2025-5372, Chapter 120, Renewable Energy Power Plant Solar Energy. This will be, item will be presented by Mr. President Brad Norris.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Board members, this is a resolution as presented. On the 23rd, Iberia Parish Government passed a ordinance to give solar companies that wanna put a solar plant in Iberia Parish rules and regulations. It has not been signed into law yet. This resolution is just stating that we support the ordinance. What the ordinance does is it gives them a list of guidelines where if they wanna come put solar panels in fields more than 50 acres, they have to follow these guidelines and that ordinance protects Iberia Parish. So if you have any questions, I could answer them.
Public comment on the agenda item? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for discussion.
So move.
Mr. Brad Norris, move. Mr. Dana Dugah, second. Is the motion to adopt the Iberia Parish School Board Resolution Number 08-2025, a resolution of support for Iberia Parish Ordinance Number 2025-5372, Chapter 120, Renewable Energy Power Plant Solar Energy, as presented by President Brad Norris. Questions or comments from board members? Mr. McDonald.
Will you make sure we get a copy of the ordinance once it's signed and approved?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Maye.
Mr. Chairman, as I've stated in the past, I would appreciate if there's an item placed on the agenda that backup to that item be placed in the board packet. Because we're being asked to vote, support something that we don't have a copy of in our packet. Now, it's fine to have it once it's been finally signed by the Parish Council President that we get a copy, except we're being asked to support it without reading it. And I would request that for the, now, talking to our attorney, Mr. Landry, the law does not require the board to attach anything to the agenda. But as a courtesy, it's been done in the past. I would respectfully request, as a courtesy, if we could get a copy of anything we're gonna discuss, that we get a copy with the packet and not after we've voted on it. You think it's possible to do that, to get a copy in our board packet of agenda items? Now, if it's not technically available, like if it's a thousand-page document, I understand you wouldn't necessarily would copy that. But if it's a few pages...
Keith, you wanna address? I got it. The resolution was attached, Mr. Maye, and the ordinance is on Iberia Parish Government's website. The whole title of the ordinance is in the website. To print it out and put it in a packet, attach it before it's signed into law, I don't know if we can do that. But we referenced it so you can go to Iberia Parish Government and read it. I wanna say it's, I don't know, 15 pages or so.
So the answer to the question is, we are not going to attach things to the agenda that are relevant to the agenda itself in the future.
I did not say that. I said, "We referenced it so you can go to the website and read it." I didn't say we weren't gonna attach anything.
Well, I don't understand because everything else in this agenda is available on the website for the school board, yet we put it in the packet. Like all this, multiple pages of the bus routes, the salary schedule, all this is available on our, on our website, but we put it in the packet. So it appears it is, I guess it's a not-relevant issue because some things we would attach and some things we would not. So we're not gonna, as courtesy, we're not gonna always attach things to the agenda, to the packet that are on the agenda. It's just something.
I'm gonna say that's incorrect, but when we put the agenda item on the agenda, Mr. Wayne didn't have it to print it or attach it. That's why we put the title in the agenda, to make it searchable. That's the only reason. But to say we're not gonna put it and pick what we're gonna put, that's an inaccurate statement.
Well, if it was available, why wouldn't it print it? I mean, I don't, if it was, it's been available online for a long time, then why wouldn't it print it? I mean, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I would, as a courtesy, I would request that anything that's on the agenda, that backup material, especially something like an ordinance, that we're being required to vote on it as though we've read it in detail, which many of us have not.
I will make a note and have Ms. Gwen or Mr. Landry print anything for you. I prefer to read it online. Some people prefer it in their hand. I will make a note for you to have it printed for you.
So, again, that's a no, then.
A no for what?
You're not going to print things and attach it to the agenda in the future.
Mr. Maye, you putting words in my mouth.
Well, I'm asking.
No, I don't appreciate it. I answered the question. Asked and answered. I'm not gonna entertain it. Mr. Landry?
I sent you last night, Mr. Maye.
Correct.
What is available. It says a proposed ordinance.
That wasn't my question. My question was, with the agenda in the packet.
You didn't let me finish. I can stop now if you want me to.
Go ahead, finish. I don't run this meeting.
I tried printing what I sent you last night, but for some reason, my printer doesn't get along with Ms. Mars' computer system. So I tried printing it just a few minutes ago again. I still can't print it, but I can send you another copy. Were you able to print the one I sent you?
I don't understand. That wasn't my question. He's not answering the question I had.
To answer the question, the reason it's not attached is because I couldn't print it today. I couldn't print it.
So when the agenda was passed out, someone could've called the Parish Council and gotten a copy?
That's how I did, that's what I did last night. I got it to mail it to me on my phone and I sent it to you. I asked you if you had a printer.
That's, my question is, when the agenda is set out, I'm requesting as a courtesy that attached to the agenda is everything that is relevant to what's on the agenda.
I have always tried to do that.
But I'm not asking you that...
Been doing this for 50 years, I've never tried not to do that.
Mr. Landry, I apologize. I'm not asking you that. I'm not asking you that question. They're asking you to answer that question, but I'm not asking you that question. I'm asking the chair that who retains the agenda that if something's on the agenda, is to attach to the packet relevant materials, such as this ordinance. Now, my second, that was my first comment. The only question I have is, why is the school board involved in a zoning ordinance with the parish? This is a zoning ordinance.
We are not in a zoning ordinance. We are offering support to show that we are united as the same thing for Iberia Parish.
No, but I mean, this is a zoning ordinance, and we are in support of a zoning ordinance.
It's more than a zoning ordinance. And what this resolution is stating is that we support the ordinance that they are passing. They are passing, not the school board, Iberia Parish Government. We are just in support of it to show that we are united. And if you don't support it, it's fine. That's your right.
I guess I don't understand why, what, how is the school board involved in saying yea or nay, support, not support, a zoning ordinance to the parish?
We support a lot of things through resolutions, Mr. Maye. You never once questioned any one of those, but we won't get into that. But this resolution is just stating that support. If you want to support it, great. The ordinance is not in law right now. So if they have a resolution from the school board saying, "We support the ordinance as well," then he might sign it into law. He might not veto it. I don't know. It's just, it's a resolution of support, and you don't have to support it. That's your right.
But that wasn't my question about me. I'm asking, why is the school board interested in a zoning ordinance?
How many schools we have in Iberia Parish?
Not about me.
How many schools we have in Iberia Parish?
Several.
23. So you don't think we don't have a dog in the fight to support something? I think we do. That's why I brought the resolution. Again, you don't have to support it.
Mr. Pradie?
Yes. Let me say this, and I understand Mr. Maye's point. But we can't attach everything to the agenda. We get an agenda item from the business department that's on the agenda, and we don't get the information until we get here because they're still working it out. So when the package goes out, there is no information on the business department because they haven't completed their work yet. So this is the same thing. They haven't completed their work yet. And their work is to sign it in the law. Once that's done, then you can get a copy of it. That's why Mr. Landry is having problem with his and you having problem with yours. So therefore, it's moot, in my opinion. And I call for the question.
Any questions being called for? We need to get a second on that, right?
Yeah, you got to have a second.
Who wants the second question? Dana Segura? The second question. If you're in support of the question and couldn't stop in a discussion, you vote yes. If not, you vote no. You got to vote.
Hold on, she didn't put it up yet.
Wait, you don't have a note on here.
Hold on, she didn't put it up yet.
Okay, there it is. Y'all vote.
We don't want to.
Ms. Gwynn? Motion pass?
Yep.
Hold on. We got, okay, you got, you don't want to qualify your no vote?
Who voted? I voted no. I'm supposed to vote yes.
You want to vote yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
I made the motion. I got to vote yes.
I know, you made the motion. Mr. Maye, you want to?
That'd be stupid of me.
You good? Okay. So now, huh? Mr. Maye, have stained. You got all that? Okay. Now we can vote on the agenda item?
Yep.
Please vote. Hold on, she's not ready.
You're slow, Ms. Gwynn.
That's okay, Ms. Gwynn. You're doing good. Please vote.
I got to tease it.
Ms. Gwynn? Motion passes.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Moving on to announcements. Mr. Hulay?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to echo Ms. Gwynn's comment that it has been a date. We would have thought today was the first day of school, but it's just in preparation for the first day of school, which is tomorrow. In fact, I told you in the newsletter last week that we had revised our several bus routes, eliminated and combined some routes. And as part of that process, we implemented a new system, a new way for parents to determine the bus number that their kids ride. And it's on our website. They go in and they put their address, and it gives them the bus number. Well, a few kinks in the system. There were a few parents that didn't under, I say a few. When I left to come into the board meeting, I think we were on 160. I have, I still have five employees that are in the office. That's where Ms. Moore is. They are returning every call personally to the parents. And the parents that they're talking to, they're all very appreciative. It's like, "It's 5:00, and y'all calling us back?" "Yes, ma'am. We want to make sure that everybody is where they need to be tomorrow." So I want to thank the staff that are still in there making calls and talking to our parents at 6:00 in the evening.
Just make sure District 13 is taking care of the hell they're in.
So, but, you know, after we get over this little hurdle, I think we're going to, it's going to be smooth sailing once again. And we are making our bus routes a lot more efficient. So thanks to our Transportation Department for that. I did send a letter to our employees today in preparation for the first day of school. And I told the teachers, explained to them, you know, the actions the board has taken this summer in regards to the adjustments to our salary schedule. I had received several positive emails back. In addition, you should have a letter at your places. We received a letter from the Iberia Principals Association thanking you for the support and the vote of confidence in the changes that you made to the salary schedule this summer. And so that was also very encouraging to get that letter of support from our principals. You also, did you get an envelope with jamboree information as well? That is coming up as August the 28th is the jamboree. Delcum is hosting this year, and it's on a Thursday night. So you should have received some information about that. And then on the Friday night, the 29th, will be the Bayou Bowl, and that'll be the jamboree between Nish and Westgate. And Westgate is the host this year for that event. And so we'll get you that information when it becomes available as well. I want to thank Mr. Lopez and his crew to making sure that all of our video intro devices, that summer project is complete. It's working. KATC came out and did a great story. I was a little worried, you know, it is going to be an inconvenience for parents and visitors that will have to go through another layer to get into the school. But it's for the best. It's for the safety of the kids. And really, you know, that worry that I had didn't come to fruition because it was nothing but positive comments that I received from parents so far and on our Facebook in support of what we're doing to add that extra layer of support. So I'm anxious to go and see it and work, you know, at work once we start having visitors come into the school during the school day tomorrow. But all of our schools have been trained. Some of our principals, if you're on Facebook, you may have gotten to see, some of them did some really good little videos and tutorials for their parents, explaining to them how the system is going to work. And so our principals go above and beyond for that type of thing. So other than that, we're ready. Buses will be rolling in the morning. We're ready to welcome our students, and I have a great feeling about this school year. We have lots of good things to come, and just thank you for your support. And we are going to have some hiccups. It's not going to be smooth. We're going to run into some problems over the next couple of days. But if any of your constituents call, just, you know, you just have to pick up the phone and text me or call me, and we will make sure that they get the solution that they need. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hulay. Any other board comments? I got one question for you, Mr. Hulay. When you go to the box and they buzz you in, there's a video of you, right? The secretary sees it. What if they don't let you in? They could let me in. What if they don't let you in? The boss is here, lock the door.
I'm going to ask Harry if he could give me some kind of a key fob or a swipe card where I could, I could make my way in without having, having the. Tuck your shirt in. If it becomes a trend, well, they have me waiting at the door for five or 10 minutes before they let me in, we'll know something's up, but.
Any other board discussion? Moved by Mr. Pradie, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc for adjournment. Questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at 6:11.